And a very peaceful silence. Bless the go to sleep. Thanks very much. I've decided whether we're in the dark or not, we're going to continue the whole school board meeting every Monday night because it seems to be keeping the weather in check. Correspondence.
There are several substitute.
I'll move the minutes of eleven twenty-one as presented.
The second day over. Changes, additions, substitutions, additions. If anybody not here who's listed as being here, anybody here who wasn't listed? Seen no changes? All in favor of moving the minutes as presented? Opposed? Extentions?
I'm a yes. I'm sorry.
Very yes. Are you unanimous? I will pass around the substitute reports. They are about as you would expect. They continue not to have any difficulty filling. Positions will have to leave. Commendations and good news.
I'll start again. We're still collecting cell phones and glasses at the middle school. Doing well. Teacher conferences are...
Take them now.
Thank you so much. Teacher conferences are this Friday, so parents have been contacting teachers to set up their conferences. That's going on Friday. We had our first dance Friday night. It went as well as could be expected is what I was told for the first dance. Coming up next week is the MBMS band concert on Tuesday night and the strings and chorus concert at Wednesday night, and that'll be held here at the high school. And we had a successful, our first play right before Thanksgiving, Banana Sandwich in a Boat was the name of it. It was very cute. The kids presented it at Bartlett and at Maple Ave, and they told me that it went very well, and the kids at the elementary schools laughed a lot, but it was a great show. So that went well. Not sure on the final numbers of the canned food drive, but not as well as it's been in the past given the economy. They thought that was probably why. That's me.
I'll start with Maple Avenue. Maple Avenue's parent-faculty-together group hosted a wonderful holiday breakfast on Saturday. Many Maple families enjoyed this kickoff to the holiday season. We have over 200 people from Maple Avenue attending the Christmas Carol Play at Saint A's this week. Our student council will be collecting new pajamas to donate to the Warmth from the Millard Project. Children's pajamas of all sizes are being collected. Our goal is to collect 202 sets of pajamas. And we also have parent-teacher conference, parent-teacher conferences on Friday. Yay, parent-teacher conferences. Those are fun. Glen Lake. Leslie would like me to share with the board that Glen Lake recently collected 1,084 non-perishable food items for the network food pantry. This is a school record. And from David, on Monday, November 21st, the Boston Museum of Science visited the 4th grade at Bartlett. They presented a hands-on workshop entitled "Geology: Rock Detectives", in which students explored different types of rocks and how they are formed. Working as a team, students identified various rocks and minerals using observations and experiments. It was an excellent learning experience made possible by a grant from the Museum of Science. On Monday, November 28th, WMUR weatherman Kevin Scrupa visited Bartlett's 3rd grade classes as well as part of their unit on weather. The students learned a lot about weather and forecasting. They were also able to see themselves on the news the next morning. And that's all.
Report. Jeanne actually emailed me just before the meeting, said she had a family emergency and was going to try to get here, but if not, I have her good news. So she would like to note that the varsity and JV bowling team are in second place in last week's tournament. They have a next home meet on Saturday. The art club is continuing to have their second day of jewelry sale this Friday from 2 to 6 if you need holiday gifts. The jewelry sale is exceptional. The kids do such a good job. It's actually fundraiser for that program to continue so that they kind of replenish their supplies through this sale. Nothing is over $12. There is absolutely some fabulous. They sold $2,600, I think it was, worth of jewelry at $12 apiece. So they sell some volume and they made some volume. So that is this Friday starting at 2 o'clock. If you want to stop by, it's right in the art room. Anybody is more than welcome to attend.
I went to the last one.
Yeah.
It was great stuff. A lot of the students were really proud of what they had done.
Yep.
Bought bracelets for $6, you know, earrings for $7, and it's good stuff. It is. So I do, I recommend you all check it out.
Yep.
And gentlemen, if you're present, please be assured that your significant other is watching.
The high school chorus will be performing with the Manchester Choral Society and the orchestra this weekend, December 10th and 11th. If you're interested, let me know and we can see about getting you tickets for that. We had a, they had a very successful beginning to the high school's canned food drive. Student council is also accepting coupon booklets from Sunday News. So if you get, they said that the Red Plum Smart Source and P&amp;G Savers are the three best ones. They donate, they give those to the food pantry, who then uses the coupons to obviously buy stuff. So if you have coupons and you want to bring them off and drop them off to the high school, you're more than welcome to do that. They would love those. And the last thing is that winter sports madness night is this Tuesday, 7 o'clock in the gym, and that's kind of like a pep rally fun night to kind of welcome in the new sports for the season and introduce all the players. And I think they have a bunch of athletic competitions as well that evening. So that's this Tuesday, tomorrow at 7 o'clock.
Any other commendations, good news? Any public comment? Seen none. We'll move along to standing committee reports. Admin and finance.
Actually, Phil, I do have a commendation. Last week, we all attended, and I attended the one at the high school. Wasn't able to do the Maple Avenue, but the tour that the DHS staff gave us and the New Boston and Dunbarton area school boards as well was fantastic. I was just so excited about this school after that presentation with Frank and Kim and Kevin. I just thought they did a wonderful job and there were, I mean, I know what's going on in the schools and stuff, but they brought out a lot of things that are happening here that are just awesome, I think. So I think they did an excellent job with the tour, and I think some really awesome things are going on here.
I agree. That's a point well made, and it's something we probably ought to think about doing as a periodic event because they really, they clearly understand what's going on in their building. They clearly understand what they're accomplishing. They did a great job of communicating. You're right, that's a terrific point, and there are great things happening here. Administration and finance.
You really want to know. The, I'll move the manifest of $1,290,152.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay.
You're going to leave off the 83 cents?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't get it.
Picky, picky. Major items for the payroll. Payroll for 12-1 was $527,177.25. Payroll taxes were $187,911.36 for a total of $715,088.61. The account payables, the special ed, Crotchett Mountain, $11,387. And to the provider for transportation, $39,729 for a grand total of special ed for $51,116. The general expenses, Red Fuller Oil, $13,402. The Goffstown Truck Center for regular ed transportation, $93,812. In New Hampshire, this is a great one, Musculoskeletal Institute. That was for $11,025. That's the athletic training services for January through June. PSNH was $17,862, and SAU services, $109,351 for a total of $245,452 for general expenses. Any questions?
Questions? Observations. Seen none, all in favor of the manifest as presented? Opposed? Extentions? Any other admin and finance wisdoms, Heather?
Not at the moment.
Human resources.
Next week, 6 o'clock at the APU.
Planning and communications.
Met tonight, had a good news, spoke about many things. One thing we're trying to do is get the bad contract with our articles that we have been submitting every two weeks for the paper. We're looking to have one ready to go for next week's paper. We talked about different topics for the coming weeks. We'll be speaking about budget, rebuilding project, the athletic field project that's coming up, going through the new year. I'm sure we'll be discussing contracts. As always, we remain open to suggestions and input from the board and participation from the board. Yes?
I think it might be a good idea to put in something about the area agreement. A lot of people are spooked by that article that said that you're going to lose $4.45, your taxes are going to go up definitely. They don't read the whole article and say, but we haven't taken the expenses out of that number. And I don't know how, I don't think we can be very detailed. I think that might go a long way to helping people understand that that's just one component.
The article didn't have those components? I thought it had.
It said, you know, that 4.45, we could lose that revenue.
Yeah.
And people automatically see. I don't even know if they bothered to read the rest of the article that says that we haven't taken the expenses out. That number is going to go down if anybody leaves.
It goes up.
Well, that's just it. People expect if they leave, it's going to come down the whole 44, 4.45, and that's not the case.
We have an area meeting, which I'll talk about, but we have, it's scheduled for Friday, and so we should have some more definitive kind of information of where we are at that meeting. So maybe the next article, what we can think about.
Yeah.
Doing the area, because we'll have more information as to where the process is, who's participating, you know, it'll come down more by Friday.
Yeah, somewhere along the line. I think a clar, just a bit of clarification.
Okay, that's a good idea. And then just the other follow-up. You may recall, last month, we talked about looking into a Facebook page for the district, and that was looked into in depth, and we did decide not to go through, not to follow through with it, send the administrative aspect of how we're going to administer it, stay on top of it, you know, that kind of stuff. So we will not be pursuing that avenue of communication. Next meeting is the first Monday in January, January 7th.
Courtney, elementary education.
Our next meeting is next Monday, the 12th, at 7:00 p.m. at the SAU.
Budget committee.
Budget committee, budget committee is currently meeting Tuesdays and Thursdays. They're still working through the town budget. They are nearly complete with the town budget. It does come up for one more, passed through the entire committee, the whole town budget. School board is scheduled to go to the budget committee tomorrow night for a question and answer period. I just got an update from John because I wasn't able to be there on Thursday, but he said that it's likely that about halfway through the meeting is when the school will get a chance to begin with the Q and A. So see you tomorrow night.
At this juncture, in anticipation of that event, have you received any questions from any members of the budget committee?
I have not.
Okay. Stacy?
Yeah. I emailed the board attached to my superintendent's notes last week, the Honeywell Energy Audit, avoidance review for your information, and just as a recap, we were able to save an additional $63,574 over the projected savings that they had projected when they did the study six years ago of $89,339. So we're actually seeing a pretty significant continued savings over what they had projected, which is nice. All of our schools are in the process of getting their fire inspections done. That's annually. We have to do them before the end of December, so all the schools have been in contact with Bill Connor, and they've scheduled those in, so those will be happening in the next couple of weeks. I also sent out today to all the boards and all of the Gofftown School District members information on the Dream Keeper and Cornerstone Awards. Those are the annual awards that the board gives, and so I have a deadline of December 24th, just before vacation, to get those applications in. So PNC will see them at their first meeting in January to make decisions so that we can bring them to the board as well for decisions and move them forward where you'll present them at deliberative sessions.
Stacy, do we have a record of like going back 10 years, who received them?
The plaques would have that record on them.
I guess.
They're in the school.
No. I was just curious about recipients where I was considering nominating someone. I don't know if that person ever been previously nominated.
Okay, if you want to see me afterwards, then let me know, and I can research it for you. Let's see. Kim McCann is a finalist for Assistant Principal of the Year award, and she had her interview last week with the committee along with lots of other people. So I thank any board members who were able to make that. I think she did pretty well, and if nothing else, it's a nice accolade, and it's a nice reflection for her to know that the board and the administration support her and think that she's doing a wonderful job. Two meeting, just reminders because they came up recently. One is, I talked earlier about the area agreement meeting is this Friday at 6 o'clock. I know there was some back and forth of whether it was this Friday or next Saturday. We decided on this Friday, so we're going to go forward with that. And GEA negotiations is Thursday at 1 o'clock from like 1 to 6-ish. We decided we needed a longer timeframe.
Where?
At the SAU. So people can make that, who are on that committee.
What date?
Thursday, this Thursday, at 1 o'clock.
Yeah.
I did want to update the board I had regarding Mountain View and the school calendar and what we were going to do with the two potential extra days. I sent out, interestingly, so I sent out a survey to all of the, I went to a staff meeting and talked to all the staff, gathered some ideas from them and input on that, sent out a survey to all of the staff. Got back almost 100% response, which was good. I gave them four options. The first option, and again, this was kind of here's, here's the one part, which is that students and staff make up the two days, and here's the part of we get a waiver for the students and staff for two days, and somewhere in between, the middle, is something we can all work with, something the board can approve, I can approve, and go forward with. And so out of that, I came up with kind of four options that I thought were, I could support, that the board would support. One was that the students and staff would just go two extra days, or though those two days were at the end of the year. You know, we potentially talked about maybe the January 10th day, which is elections, going to school on that day because it doesn't affect, we don't have elections there, so we could do that. The option two was getting a waiver for the students for two days, and then the faculty would document 12 hours of time for professional development, submit that to the principal or the administrators for approval of, I've done 12 hours. That I do was very clear that that couldn't include grading papers, report cards, like it had to be professional development. The third option was very similar to that, which was just then, instead of doing professional development on your own, we would do two days of professional development, provide opportunity. So one might have been, some of the options were January 10th, Martin Luther King Day on January 16th, or a day at the very end of the year. So again, I was trying to, here's the option, what two days out of those three would work for you or would you be interested in? And then option four was having students attend on a Saturday session, have them either do, move one of their field trips to a Saturday, do some kind of community service, or maybe fifth graders came in and done a cleanup of the playground day, and then the other day would be a structured professional development day. So I gave those four options out. Interestingly, somebody chose to take my four option sheet, blow it up and type on it a fifth option, and then posted it. So we had lots of people, and it was a little weird because they kept coming in with kind of the same language on them, and we were like, it's a little weird that everybody came up with the same language. So somebody in the school decided that we should have option five available, which was to get a waiver for students and staff. Now, I didn't put that on as an option because clearly, everybody would choose that option. I would choose that option if that was there. But I wanted to get a feel from other people where they came from. So option one.
This was, this was not a survey of students, this was a survey of staff.
This was a survey of staff. Yep, the staff there. So a staff member chose to put option five out there, which was a little disconcerting to me because that wasn't an option on the sheet, but somebody chose to do that. Interestingly, 15 people chose that option. So 15 people did not get their voices heard on the other appropriate options that I actually put out there. So I thought that was a little interesting note, but option one, 20 people chose that option, option two, 12 people, option three, 12 people, and option four was four people. So based on that, option one seemed to be.
Wait a second. How many, how many, bad math doesn't, how many?
They're supposed to.
Are we probably 75 or 80, 90 teachers over there, professional staff?
And how many responded?
20, 30, 42, 46, 56, 61.
Not, not, not the 15 who.
61 altogether. About what we have.
Okay.
Yeah, there were a couple of people who didn't get responses back.
Oh, okay. So, so, okay. I just, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but it's probably, we have 70 maybe.
I wouldn't confirm either, but it's close to that, between 60 and 70.
Yeah, so we had a good turn. I mean, it was.
Thanks. I just, I was quickly trying to.
When people hand them in, they cross off the list, so we only got one from everybody, and it was pretty, most of them were crossed off.
I think next time we do a survey, though, I think you need to make it clear that they don't get to add choices to it.
Yeah, so.
Well, yeah, I saw that in the teacher's room, and I thought it was a joke. It was, it wasn't clear what it was. It was just option five, and it had what it was, and it was there. And I happened to walk through to go to the ladies' room and saw it was a joke.
Now, we don't change documents that you post on the board. I don't think anybody should be posting documents that the district posts on that board.
Well, in the meantime, I mean, I guess I, the lesson learned is 15 people don't get their say heard on what option they would have preferred. And so option one is the, was the largest option. I'll be honest with you, I have not talked to administration at the middle school about this yet, so we haven't really planned it out. But I guess I would be looking for direction from the board.
Frances, what was number one?
So option one was to attend, to actually just go to school those two days. What I'd like to investigate is having, is looking at January 10th as the one day, and then using a day after the last day of school. So, but making it, so the last day of school's a half day for everybody, adding just a second half day for students onto the schedule so that teachers would actually, that first half day, all teachers in at the Mountain View would work the full day, and then the second day would be a half day. Traditionally, we've let teachers go once kids are out and they've checked out. So that's what I would be looking at. I just, I need to explore it a little bit more, but I wanted to bring it to the board to see if that was something people would think about or not think about.
Do we, do we have a feel of the cost on 100 a bus?
It's a $175 a bus for the day. We have 23 buses in Goffstown. I mean, obviously, it's a factor for Dunbarton and New Boston as well. The bus company did say we would not need 23 buses because they would just start, because it's just Mountain View, they would combine runs and look at how to cut back. They didn't, they haven't done it yet to tell me what that looked like, but.
What's January 10th?
January 10th is the election day. So it was a float, it was a day that was in our calendar as a day off for teachers and staff, but we were waiting to see what that day was because we didn't know about it, so.
Do we have another day? I like January 10th, it's a great day. Do we have another day other than the last day of school? Because those don't tend to be the most productive educational days.
We lost, we lost days of instructional time, and that tack on addresses the, it's a solution.
Right. I mean, the other solution is, I mean, the board could waive both days for students and staff. You have to recollect, though, that that means Mountain View staff have two additional days off that everybody else has worked.
Lauren?
I like the idea of having the election day since it wouldn't affect anybody, but I would rather waive it than tack on the half day at the end because I think it'd be kind of useless at that point for educationally.
I think a Saturday day during the year would be a.
Yeah, the hard part, I mean, I love that idea. The hard part about Saturdays, it's, my fear is if we, if the board chose to go that direction, because I had very few people, I only had four, say that that was their preferred, is that we would have, just everybody would call out and nobody would come in.
Right.
About January 16th?
Well, January 16th is one I have to look at. It is a vacation day. It is a holiday for administration. So I would need to confer with them whether they were willing to work on a paid holiday for them.
Because I know the high.
Which is a paid holiday for everybody.
The seniors have come in on Saturdays before, and that's worked out fine when they have needed to make up a day for grad, before graduation.
And I think for the juniors and seniors, I'm sorry.
Lauren had her hand up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, she was right.
Have we thought about the idea of extending the school day like we had done one of those years for a number of days?
Yeah, you can't do it with just Mountain View because the bus schedules are so intertwined. So you can't add half an hour to Mountain View's schedule because everybody else, the buses go to each school because there's, the runs are all combined. We don't have just a Mountain View run.
My concern was doing Saturdays. I think it works great with juniors and seniors because there's a better chance that they'll provide for their own transportation. I don't see parents being too enthralled with getting up on the Saturday to get their kids ready for school and/or having to drive them to school. So I'm afraid not only we probably have a lot of call-ins, I'm not sure how many of the kids would actually attend and be able to get the educational benefit. I like the idea that Sue mentioned, maybe the 16th or come up another day during the school year to do it within the structure of Monday through Friday.
There's a March 13th day that's a teacher's workshop.
Right, but then, so you don't gain anything because it's a teacher workshop day, so teachers would have to be in it anyway.
But could, yeah, should you move like a teacher's workshop to the end of the year as opposed to having the kids go to school at the end of the year without learning anything?
I like that, I like that idea.
I mean, if there's, if there's some productive stuff to be done, or a couple of things. With regard to professional development.
Again, I will, I mean, there's no great, the day after school ends for professional development is honestly not a great day. People are done with the year, they wrapped it up. Nobody's interested in sitting down and learning about what's going. Is it just a bad day to do professional development?
Maybe we could check with the administration about, they would be willing to work on the 16th and then take a day.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else during the school year.
Well, it would have to be this contract year.
Oh, yeah. Give them some, each some, the decap time.
There's three of them, so they can space it out.
I know I've read little snippets here and there about the storm bag process that some schools are using. Is that something that could be implemented in this situation?
And we actually just got a memo from the DOE regarding that. If some of you have heard, that London Dairy was using it as a makeup day. It was very clear that that is not the intent or purpose of those, and they will not approve them. The main purpose of the blizzard bags was exactly that. If it's a snow day that you can make up, you can only use them for three days, I believe it is. But I think districts have tried to think outside of the box, and so there's been districts who have actually said, well, we have a teacher workshop day, let's use blizzard bags and count it as a school day. there's been districts who have actually said, well, we have a teacher workshop day, let's use blizzard bags and count it as a school day. And that is not what the purpose of them was. And so the DOE sent us a letter just outlining that's not the purpose, so.
In those cases, it seems like.
I think the purpose of it is if you have a snow day, that you can do it. The downside, and actually, we talked to the middle school staff about it and it wasn't tons of support to go forward. I mean, people, we had dialogue, it's, it's complicated to be able to get there. You have to have your staff ready online. I, I mean, you have to demonstrate that eighty percent of your kids participated. It needs to be a curriculum that's equal to being in school for the day. So it's not just like sending home, you know, a packet of spelling and math. I mean, it has to be quality education. And so, I, I mean, we can certainly explore it. It's just not something that was, I was jumping up and down saying, here's where I wanted to devote my time to.
Just a question, I wondered.
Yeah. I can do a little more exploration and hopefully at the next meeting, bring something forward because I want to be able to, if it's the January tenth day, let parents know that that's the plan and the bus company and teachers and as we whittle down. I think that was all I had for superintendents, so it's a little off track.
Oh, whole business, impact fee discussion.
This is just looking for the board. Southern New Hampshire Planning came to the meeting last month, provided you guys input or feedback. Is there anything? Ray and I are going to kind of tag team the budget committee meeting, planning board meeting. Is there anything, is, I don't know, board is going to go to that meeting and ask questions, or if you want us to represent or ask questions or make any statements is really what we're looking for, is guidance from the board on what you want us to do as administrators for that meeting.
I will also shuttle back, plan on shuttling back and forth for both of those reasons. One, to ask questions and hopefully listen and, and then.
I think we should support the higher number, the, the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And I guess my question is, I'm still confused about the portable classrooms. They have this thing that they, if it's temporary, they don't count them. If it's more than five years, they'll count them. We've had ours a lot more than five years.
But the, I think, in, in fairness to, to the conversation that we had that night, that's true. But the notion is, is that they are, they are there for a temporary purpose. Until some, and the long-range plan is to do things out of our capital expenditures to make the building render those portables unnecessary.
I understand that.
And, and.
Like if five years is their criteria, ours have been around for, considering more than five years.
Well, I think they responded to that. I don't know that, that at this juncture, they're going to change their methodology to treat those.
We can make our point, though.
I think we can. But they are going to change their methodology, which would reduce that, the impact fees, simply because we haven't been able to deal with a need yet. So I think we'll be okay. But the other piece is, is I think that it represents an interesting place where we can hear from the planning board on sort of their vision of that particular item as a policymaking tool.
Right. And quite honestly, I think, I don't know if they're aware that even at six thousand dollars, it doesn't pay for one student in any of our schools.
Nope, not gross.
Well, and, and looking at their methodology, I don't think their intent is for necessarily.
But I think they need to see how we look at that.
Well, that, and I also think one of the other things is, is we have some recent data that we can talk about that may be distinguishable from what they relied on in their analysis. I mean, it's a pretty good model. It's, it's hard to argue with their design. But again, we have some information of late that suggests that at least in some kinds of housing, the exposure is greater. So, those are all things we can talk about. Building Committee follow-up or recommendations Thursday night.
Somebody from the building, or you want me to do it? Talk about who's.
You got the notes.
Okay. So the building committee met this evening. We discussed several items, one of which was looking to move forward now with the construction management services portion of this. We are coming to a very good close on getting the bid documents and everything's ready to go. Fred believes in the next week or so he'll have that, he's just about done with it. The next phase of this, as the committee discussed, was to go out to bid for CM services. And so what we are asking the board is to ask if the board is ready to go there because one of the things we want to do is have CM lined up if it's going on the warrant article so that we can, one is make sure we actually have a CM that says, yes, this is the price, and, and lock into that price for them. But the also is that, what, if this is approved in March, that we would be able to just go right into beginning to go out to bid, get construction going. You know, as you know, this is going to be a time element of getting Maple Ave started as soon as we possibly can, so that we can move forward. Looking at getting that done the first year so that Bartlett students can get shifted over to Maple, so that Bartlett can get done and so it's a time factor. If we wait till after March, we are talking that, you know, it's probably a six or eight week process to get a CM bid, get the bids done and bring it back to the board for approval. So what we are asking, if the committees, if the board, this board is comfortable, is to ask the committee, to direct the committee to move forward with an RFP for CM services and bring back a recommendation to the board.
Now, I would add to this, this sort of dovetails with the other new business item is, which is the warrant article discussion. Do you want to make the decision on the construction manager services phase now, or do you want to have a global discussion about warrant articles?
I think we should discuss it, I'm going to put it out as a warrant, that will affect that decision.
I agree. We can do this one of two ways. We can either open up the floor for discussion on warrant article, or somebody can make a motion. I don't see a motion.
You can table it till after the warrant article discussion.
Well, we can have that conversation now. I mean, I don't see any reason not to. We have.
So you're looking for a motion to move the CM portion up forward?
But, but the motion to move the CM portion forward relies necessarily on a warrant article for the project.
Voted on that at last meeting.
We did vote to put the warrant articles on the ballot.
To put them as to warrant articles.
So we'll then make the motion to move forward with the, with the building committee to move forward with the CM process.
And to, can I add, just, and to bring back a recommendation to the board?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can't do anything, not while. Not with that kind of money.
We did want to speak also, as the building committee moves forward, we're speaking with the public about the project, having the ability to do so.
So let's have the, just, can we have a second on the motion?
I second that motion, yes.
I think that's part, partially the building committee's job. I don't think we need specific.
So the, the question came up at the meeting was, so as we move this forward and start to look to do presentations, we're going to pre-do a, we're going to put together a presentation. Does this board want to review that presentation and approve it, or are you okay with the committee going forward, knowing you have three school board members on that committee with putting together the presentation to present to groups?
The committee did want that direction. They wanted the blessing of the board to go ahead and do that.
I don't think it needs to be a part of the CM motion.
No.
No, actually, you just emailed me when you said they don't do, and I'm like, oh, actually, they want to talk about.
Wouldn't that follow with the?
Motion is to approve the C, going forward with the CM.
I'm sorry, I gotta do this.
Well, wouldn't that discussion follow the warrant articles too? If it's not going to be on a warrant, you don't have to try to sell it. You're going to discuss the warrant articles again, right?
Forward on the idea that we had. We already put them on the warrant.
Those.
At your last board meeting, the board agreed to put a warrant.
Elementary.
Facilities. Now, you'll have the warrants here and at some point, you'll need to move those warrants to the next process. So there is an opportunity, if you didn't want to continue with that, to take them off. There's multiple opportunities to take them off or leave them on.
Okay, I think our water's got muddy.
Yeah, so we already have a motion on what we're about to CM, let's start with that.
Let's deal with, with the motion, then we'll deal with whether or not there needs to be a charge to the committee for planning presentations. Any other discussion on the CM motion?
No, besides, I think it's appropriate for the building committee to move forward with that stuff at this point.
Right, because, because other than that, we're stalled. Do we have any questions, concerns? What's the price of that phase?
The price of that phase.
Not what price is they going to come back with.
Yeah, so typically, it's three percent or under is typical of construction cost. My understanding is that, within the bid process, the, any costs are only assigned once the project is passed. So they'll do that work up until, if it's not passed, the contract will be, you'll follow this project for two years, three years, however long we decide that goes forward and they only get paid when it's passed.
All in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed, abstentions? Was, was that a yes or a no? Or was it no?
That's correct.
Would you like to speak to your opposition?
No, it's no.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seven, one. Continuing on in order. Do you want to deal with the charge issue now?
We could well be on topic.
Right, there's no reason to move off that.
So essentially, did you want to go, sorry, or did I do so already? Essentially, the building committee, they're looking to move forward with these plans and bringing it to the public, maybe with the sort of groups in town. You know, parent groups, Rotary, Lions, just to get the word out about their work and what the plans are and whatnot. Of course, that's going to entail presentation and preparing the presentation and whatnot. And what they're looking for is, is for the blessing of the board to do, to do this, to know that the board is behind them and is charging them with the ability to do so.
Is this before the board has approved the process, or is this a presentation of the options?
It's a presentation of the plans to, to date.
Okay. So then, here's the building, here's what we're adding, here's what we're, why we're doing it, here's how much it's going to cost, all of those cases.
To help people better understand the, the projects proposed.
I always think that's extremely helpful to people. The more people that know the correct information and can spread correct information instead of rumor, I, I think that's hugely important.
The people are in the best position to do the work, or the people, or to, to plan it and to participate in the execution, the people who've been working on it for years. And so, I would entertain a motion to charge the committee, the elementary facilities building committee, with preparation of planning and presentation materials. Ethan's the motion to be had.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I was like, I make the motion, please.
Whatever.
Suzanne moves. I had seconds, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, re-announced?
And just the last piece on that is, can you just get direction that the board is okay with us going forward to present that, the, the plans to the planning board, which is on Thursday?
Do you need a motion, did you want?
No, just, if you could just say yes, you were fine with us presenting that to the planning board.
Area review committee update.
Do you want me to go into what we discussed at our last meeting?
Sure.
Okay. It seems like most of what we've been talking about so far is language, just clarifying language. A lot of it is adding amendment or amendment language into the final document, matching up language with RSA stuff. There were a couple of things that came up. One was a request for New Boston and Dunbar to have votes on the C and E committee. Another was for the fifth graders to be able to participate in any sports that fifth graders at Mountain View participate in as a feeder program. They would pay costs if their students could come and participate in at Mountain View at, and I think the sports were cross-country.
Breastling.
No.
The not any, it would be any, they were asking for any sports for fifth and sixth grade. Yep, and I said I would follow up with some of that and ask some questions, so I'm done.
There was a lot of language about putting actual enrollment calculations instead of average daily, which made a, a lot of sense. A glossary in this so that different, different words, a definition could be given to them so that everybody would be looking at, you know, average daily enrollment as opposed to actual, you know, just those, defining those kinds of words in a glossary so that if anyone picked up the area agreement, they would, everybody would be on the same page with exactly what those words meant. Another thing came up is if an audit was called, who would pay for it? And something that concerned some of us, I think, a little bit was New Boston was talking about, instead of putting it on the warrant article this year as to where the town wanted to go with the area equipment agreement, their warrant article was going to say to start a study committee to look at the area agreement. And we've been doing that. I mean, that's what this whole work has been doing, not to start over again. Because we're hoping that when we end up on this meeting on Friday, that, that we have a document to work with, not that one of the towns is going to go and, and have a study committee. Sue, would you say that was your concern as well?
That they had another year to look at this. I mean, it clearly says, need two years, not a vacation.
They thought that's the way the process went. And so I, I was hoping that from the information that came out of that meeting, that they were going to kind of line up with the rest of us, but.
And I, just so the board understands, I, after that, because then the board, the committee had questions of, well, what does that mean? So I, Ray and I called the attorney and got some legal advice, and so I did send that out to the board, the committee members about what that means, what that looks like, what are possibilities. So I anticipate on Fridays, at the meeting, starting that meeting with that open conversation of what, where are we all at and what's the next step in this process?
Did you have anything else that came out of that that you want to?
So we need to make sure that we get it refocused and.
Well, I, I think so, we're on the same page. I think, I think we're all expecting to come out of this having an idea of what we were doing and for this document to be complete so that we could put it forward to the voters to vote on it. You know, not so that we'd be studying it again. And some towns would be voting on one thing and sometimes it would be voting on another.
In, in order to, to have it take effect, we all have to be voting on the same thing.
Or it needs to be revised, or agreement has to be revised and to reflect what's actually going forward.
I, I would say it was, it was a good meeting. I mean, everybody's on the same page. It was not contentious or anything. It was just, you know, language and to make it understandable by everybody and to make it a, a really usable document, I think, so that we wouldn't have to get to the end again where there was unclear language and you know, there was need for us to get together for an amendment issue like we had last time, so.
Can I have a clarifying question? You mentioned they wanted to discuss if an audit was called, who was going to pay for it. Currently, if I'm correctly, it's where the town calls for the audit, pays for the audit. Currently, if I'm correctly, it's where the town calls for the audit, pays for the audit.
And that was just a question that came up that, that they were looking for an answer for.
But someone calls it audit?
No, actually, I think it was Ray who asked the question, and then we realized it was already in the agreement, so.
Oh, okay. I didn't know they were looking to make a change, that's what I was wondering.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I think the only thing that they, or, and listen, it got changed in your last meeting because I wasn't there, was that they sought to define the qualifications of the person who was making the assessment.
Yes, the, um, the assessment as the real estate assessment, and they were lining that up to RSA. And they were going further to research the RSA's and to try it, match it up to, so that the, you know, it matched whatever we were having the assessment done by, matched what the RSA said it had to be.
The RSA only speaks to the qualification, who is a qualified appraiser. It's not as so broad as to define who should be doing what, but.
No, but it was like a market, the thing was, is it a market appraisal, or is it a, what was the other appraisal?
Current use.
Current use, you know, those two were the.
I, I don't know anybody who's buying schools.
I know, yeah. Is there anything that anybody else has that's, that you want us to bring forth to this meeting? And as Gulfstone's input to it?
Might be the glossary that'll help out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I thought that was an excellent idea, actually, yeah.
It's a really user-friendly group in the sense that I think everybody's goal is to make sure it's really clear so that whoever's like in the SAU, who needs to interpret this and calculate it, it's very clear for all three boards, the SAU, what is in there.
Actually, this might be a good document to pass out to everybody so they could, um, look at it, do you think?
Send it out.
Could you, yeah, okay. And it, there's parts in it that New Boston wanted and parts in it that New Boston wanted to clarify or to cover.
You can, you'll be able to see the track changes.
Yeah, yeah.
THSMIC trip request.
Yep, so I have actually two, two trip requests from the high school. The first one is from Eric Romaine, looking, this is, um, they've done this before, taking about a hundred seniors or so to New York City for the United, to go tour the United Nations. They are looking to go on March twenty-third, which is a Friday. Because I think last year they did it on like a Thursday, and then our attendance on Friday was really slim, so we asked them to do it on a Friday, so we don't have to worry about Saturday. They would leave around six AM, return around midnight on that day. It's eleven dollars to get into the United Nations and about forty dollars for the bus. It's about fifty-something dollars for each student. They do have money available if a student isn't able to pay that fee to be able to go. So, um, this is a repeat field trip, so if there's motions, we're.
As long as it can get into the UN this time.
Yes.
Good.
I hope.
Any motions regarding that field trip?
It gets a great field.
This is a repeat, can we?
Yeah, it's a repeat, yeah.
Any other reasons, re-changes, or something?
Um, and this one, and maybe you might know, I apologize, I don't know that it's a repeat field trip, but Erin McKinnon and Corinne Dion, co-advisors for Student Council, would like to take a group of students to the National Leadership Experience and Development Conference in Washington DC from February three to five. They would be leaving on February two and return on Sunday, February five. It is a fairly expensive trip, six hundred dollars per student because of the airfare. But the students are well aware of the cost of the trip and are, will pay for it themselves. The school isn't sponsoring any of that. And so, um, I do think it is a good experience for our students to go to a leadership conference and, um, particularly in Washington at that level, um.
I do know that they, um, Student Council has done a trip. I remember my niece went to New Orleans for the leadership. I'm not sure, but I can tell you in a second if it's a repeat. You know, I think that there may have been a couple of years in between.
I know they've gone like up north to some, to a leadership conference there, but this one's more national.
And that's the state one, this is the national one, so if you don't mind, I'll. Hi, Erin, um, your field trip, is it repeat? Your, uh, field trip to Washington DC, is it a repeat trip?
It's a national leadership conference.
Okay, thank you very much. Bye-bye. Uh, it's a new trip.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's to a conference specifically?
For, um, it's Student Council, it's the lead conference. It's tools for combating prejudice, bullying, drugs, alcohol, depression, idea sharing and networking, project planning, community service ideas and projects, fundraising ideas, team building, education about healthy lifestyles. Looks like they check in on Friday, February second. They've got workshops all day long.
And they meet with student councils from all across the country.
Yeah, it's a.
So, you know, it's, I think it's an invaluable, um, resource for the kids, and if they're gonna pay for it themselves.
It is something that, um, is fully organized. The cost, it, on the sign-up sheet includes airfare, hotel, conference, shuttle, breakfast, lunch. So, um, it is pretty comprehensive. Frank does support it, um, and does recommend it.
And we do have, um, at least one member that's a state.
Yeah, we have a couple, I think, that are.
State, that are state, um, office holders of Student Council. So, you know, I think this is a good way for them to get ideas and inputs from, you know, all over the Uni, the United States from other Student Councils. Student Council really sets in this school, as we heard the other night, the climate for the school, and I, and I think if they can learn from other states and other kids, that certainly could bring a lot to our school.
May I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second, Nick?
Ted, followed by you. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, re-announced?
Thank you. School calendar, I'd like to table till the next meeting. Um, I have a proposed calendar. I just, we just realized that there is actually an election on September eleventh. So I'd like to meet with the principals and talk to them about what we'd like to do on that day. It's hard because it's so early in the year. The other is, I'm holding out a little bit. Um, I'd like to hear Manchester and where they're going a little further before we decide on a final calendar, so, um, I may bring this back at your next meeting in December or your first meeting in January. So it'll be one of those two, but I'd like to just ask that you table that until the next meeting.
Setting a snow date for deliberative session?
Yeah, so we have, this, we have the date of February fourth, it's a Saturday. One thing we didn't do is choose a snow date in case we happen to get snow on Saturday. I'm trying to prepare ahead. You have to have a meeting within seventy-two hours of a postponement, so it kind of limits your days to.
No, I do for a meeting on the sixth.
That's not gonna happen.
So, um. March fifth? So you're basically on March fifth or six.
No, wait, I think deliberative is February.
February. Sorry, I backed up. There was a reason I had it in my mind that it's the sixth. February sixth, I believe, just is the town. Um, it will, I think the town is doing their deliberative session on that evening. You could do it earlier than that, share a night with them.
It's Sunday, so it's more Sunday.
Yeah, but that's, the Super Bowl doesn't happen till like seven or eight, doesn't it?
Either way, people get along, right?
I told you people build up to the evening.
Philip and I will be swimming in the ocean on that day. I also don't recommend you do deliberative session on a Sunday.
Sunday's a good day, no, there'll be people that will be.
I was thinking Tuesday would be our only evening because Monday, I'm almost sure the Select, I think Selectmen did choose Monday as their.
They did, it is Monday, scheduled for Monday.
The sixth, Monday.
Tuesday's the last day.
Tuesday's, right, so it's either Monday, so your choice would be Monday to do it. I think there's a schedule of seven, you could do it earlier than that, or you could do it on Tuesday.
No.
You just need to recognize that, um, we also have New Boston School Board deliberative session that night as well. So it would just mean Ray and I, Tuesday, Ray and I splitting up ourselves. That's the only downside of that is, just recognize that fact.
Say go for the sixth.
Gotta be the sixth?
It's gotta be.
Do it like five. I mean, we can certainly talk to the Selectmen to let them know that, but.
No, you're, you're trying to do Monday at five o'clock, you're gonna get poor attendance. Absolutely poor attendance. You try to do it much earlier than six-thirty, you're gonna get very poor attendance.
It's people coming home from work.
I, 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 I'll fight tooth and nail to say that you, you can't try to schedule them both on the same night. I think it's too much for people to deal with, because you gotta start too early and you get poor attendance.
Schedule both, meaning New Boston and.
No, both the Selectmen and the school on the same night, that's just too much for the townspeople.
I mean, I, I would recommend you do it on Tuesday and just pray that we don't have snow on Saturday. And if you do, then Ray and I will just need to split up, I mean, that's.
Thank you.
You'll flip a coin, see if we can get the deal.
How about Wednesday?
Yeah, it's too late, two thousand and seventy-two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So do you, if you.
We could just hold everybody in the gym for hours and hours and hours on a snow day and then postpone it later and maybe get into Wednesday, but I don't know, I don't think we get a lot of patience on that.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Do you wanna do it on Tuesday at six? I mean, seven, starting at seven?
Six is too easy for working. Yeah, it's too hard for working people, parents to come home, take care of the kid's situation, and get back out.
We'll put that down as your sweetie.
I assume we're gonna ask, um, the Student Council and other participants at the high school, do you need a daycare situation again?
Yes, Jeannie already knows about it.
Yeah, the future business.
Future business, that's what we get it.
Yep, they've already got it on their calendar.
And they did an awesome job.
Yeah.
Oh, they did.
They're really good.
The only other, on deliberatives, we get closer, is where do you wanna hold it? Do you wanna hold it in the gym? Like we did last year, or in the auditorium, and you, we have some time to make that final decision.
Where did you do it in the gym last year?
We did in the gym last year. Yep, we had chairs down on the floor and then we just.
Yeah.
Did you need to do it in the gym?
It was a personal.
It was close. I think if we did it in the auditorium, it would have been very close. I think the gym worked out with those numbers.
Well, considering what's probably gonna be on the warrant, the gym might be the better.
Yeah.
Hopefully you'll have a really good turnout.
So you just wanna play it for the gym?
Yeah.
Is that something we can always change in the near, in the future as we get closer? If we feel it's not gonna be controversial, we take some stuff off the, or.
Yep, you don't change it.
One article, so.
Which brings us back to warrant article discussion.
So, have piles of warrant articles for you to review. Both, you know, lots of them have missing pieces because we don't have very far, but for you to start to review. So Article one is your typical article about school district members, those three members up this year.
Who's up?
Myself, Kent, and Jimmy.
Um, Article two.
Now that he's looking.
Article two will be your budget, and that will be inserted as we get closer and have more definitive information. Article three will be your, and when I say this, you can rearrange them, however, the budget has to be first, though. So you can rearrange these, rest of these articles, I, they are no specific order, I'm not recommending this order, we just put them on there. So three is your collective bargaining agreement with your teachers' association. Four is an article, you'll have to decide whether you wanna keep on or not. It is not an obligation to keep it on, and that is to be able to have a special district meeting should that article fail, to only look at cost items associated with that.
I think one of the things you brought to share is, is the requirement for this special, um, meeting. You have to have a certain percentage turnout at that special meeting for it, you will be able to be convened.
Correct. If you don't have it on here, though, you have to then get a court decision to be able to have it. So, um, this is kind of a, an opport, an option to be able to have a special meeting. If that fails, to be able to go back and negotiate and bring something back to the table again. So, again, it's the board's option or opportunity to do that or not. That would be my role as giving you all the options, and then you decide which ones you go forward with. Six would be your support staff contract. No, five would be your support staff contract. Six is your, again, the same warrant article pertaining to Article five. Seven is a draft of the area agreement information that will be. Eight would be the two school building projects. That's the dollar amount that, we're estimating it at this point in time. And it says up to the amount, so that should the bond need to be, if we actually have a CM and it comes out lower, that we can actually, we won't get the bond for that full amount, but that's the maximum amount. That's eight. Warrant article nine is the two-point-eight million for your track, movement of your track and, um, field and the auditorium renovation.
I think the order is appropriate. Um, I still would like number nine left off.
I would actually like to, in a future meeting, discuss the order.
I'm sorry.
And, and, well, the reason why I would like to, I would like to wait till negotiating team is closer to a potential contract with the G E S S and G E A. And I would, I, the discussion on that would have to be in non-public.
I think probably your, I mean, we can, I'll bring these back to your next meeting. Your January meeting is where we'll probably need to really have, hopefully we'll have some agreements at that point or not. But we'll know more definitively at that point about where the two contracts are going or not going, um, and have that. So, I mean, that would probably be your, that's your meeting you probably need to make decisions on to bring forward to the, your public, the budget committee's public hearing, um, or else you're going to need to schedule a separate meeting to be able to do that.
Question, Bill? Is, uh, on the area agreement, does the budget committee get a vote on the area agreement?
It's, it's not a cost item.
Oh, I find, just going on this, because I realize this is a draft.
Yeah, it does really take that off because they don't really.
And does the budget committee get a vote on whether you're gonna have another meeting on it?
No.
No.
Okay. And also in Article six, change it from Article three to Article five?
Yep.
In conclusion, I think the whole idea of putting all this stuff on one ballot is insane just to have it on record.
It's too much. I think it's too much, I think you're right.
I think it's insane.
It's rough to sell it for them to buy.
With, with the climate and the way the people are looking at it?
I think more is better. I mean, less is better.
Less, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Because I think.
I've got a headache tonight, I do apologize for my idiocy here.
Oh, I think there's so worked up, the area agreement is such a big question mark in people's minds. As Sue brought up. If it, if these people pull out, there's gonna be a four-dollar or something raise on the taxes or anything like that. People have it in their mind, and they have all these other things on it. I think it's too much, too much.
I think one of the, one of the things people need to remember, and people ask, so the area agreement doesn't expire till two thousand and fourteen, so it would, nothing is going to affect anything until the fourteen, fifteen school year. There's no impact on anything till that point in time.
But I know when I, when I vote and fill out the town's ballot, it drives me nuts. You know, I think the fewer that you put on, the more chance you are to getting the ones that you really want, as opposed to people just losing track along the lines.
Suzanne?
I have a question on, um, Article nine of the track and field. Question probably out, come out in my field, but what is the cost of the artificial turf on that? And is that something we might want to not do right away?
Well, I, I will share on the artificial turf, um, when we're trying to find fields, you, you have to have rest periods on regular grass. And I think this field's gonna see even more use.
If it's a million dollars, Keith, it makes a difference.
But it was. Understand, though, I mean, that's in consideration, we, we may not be able to fully use the.
If, if this is coming up again in two weeks, we could talk about it then, but I just.
I believe that the artificial turf is seven hundred and sixty dollars.
It's, 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 yeah, probably, it wouldn't surprise me to see eight hundred thousand dollars for that.
Well, when you, when this is, if Article nine stays on and you're explaining it at the meeting and people ask questions, that's one. and people ask questions, that's one of the questions they're gonna ask. They're gonna ask first what's in it and per, frankly, I'm not too sure I know what's in it, any upgrades.
Perhaps we may end up after public hearing making some adjustments to what we're asking for.
I know what caused St. A's to upgrade their, their stadium, that was.
And it probably, in the long run, is a smarter way to do it because, I mean, we've had fields where the irrigation has been broken and the, the fields have been completely ruined and had to be.
Yeah, somebody comes to you and shuts off the irrigation because they want to put in the field while the irrigation's supposed to run.
Completely done over and then, you know, then you have to either re-side that field in a hurry or, you know, do your whole work over again, seed it, water it and that kind of thing. So, in the art, I mean, the artificial turf, I think your turnover is a lot less.
Yeah, the, the thing is with the artificial turf.
But, but still, it's a lot of money.
It increased the playing time on the field and that was part of the idea behind it.
It ruins the, absolutely.
We need, we needed more playing field, so one of the ways we get it is by creating a pro, uh, turf that can handle more playing time on it. Right now, they don't do practices on the football field because it has to rest.
You can do two or three practices a day with a turf on the field. Um, I would say that I will work on some, on Article nine, some language, because I think it should say more than renovations for the Goffstown High School track and field because it's beyond renovations, so, um, I think it needs to be clearer what that looks like. And on that, I am meeting with, um, Cast on Wednesday to talk to them about the next steps and how to start to put together presentations for that group, so, um, again, preliminary stuff moving forward. Um, I, I will add, the other option is if that is something that comes off the table, the board could consider putting a warrant on to maybe create a capital reserve fund to maybe start, I mean, those are, I hate to say, those are smaller, the theater project is a smaller project, that if you put some money away in a couple of years, you might be able to do that. Um, maybe ask the groups to really start fundraising, set an expectation for fundraising for them. So, I mean, there could be some alternatives to this if you didn't want to go forward with that at this time, to maybe start to put some money away.
Remind me again what the, uh, theater renovation is supposed to be.
Theater is a, is, um, new seating, new lights, new sound.
What's the.
And in addition, it's around seven hundred thousand.
So the, the electric panel is being replaced, isn't it?
Yeah.
Because that's really bad.
Yeah, so that would give enough, you know, so that's something else to just think about as you go forward. It may not have to be a all or nothing, it could be, even if you put a hundred thousand dollars away or you, you started something to be able to look at getting that done over time, this, this is something to think about.
Needs to be done.
All right. Since you spoke to volume, um, is there anything other than, as you look at, surely at volume, if you were to rank things and say, um, these change the character of the balance?
Yeah.
I mean, we, well, you can't not have the two collective bargaining.
That's true. And I think the two scope, the schools should be on. But I think the public, and I'm talking about the public that reads the papers and isn't involved in the school and perhaps doesn't have children in school anymore, that's a lot of people. They're gonna look at this and say, we need the schools, you know, schools, we need schools. But they're gonna look at it and say, you want almost three million dollars for an athletic field and for a updated gym? In addition to two contracts and whatever fifteen million dollars for a new school? Don't you know what's going on in the outside world? They're gonna, it's gonna be too much. I think it's just gonna.
It's gonna scare them.
That's just my feeling, but, because I haven't heard anybody rah rah, ah, roaring outside about the, uh, you know, building the schools and that, I think you're trying to explain, in this climate, if, if, if the economy was going up, okay, but it's not. And you're trying to explain almost three million dollars to update an auditorium and a, and build a new athletic field, which is really what you're doing, you're not updating, you're renovating, you're not, you're building a new one. They're gonna say you're, you're not with it, you're not being realistic. The school, I, there's a chance they might say, well, they need the school, that's for the kids and we got it. But the athletic field, I'd like to see it all myself, I'd like to see it all passed.
Thanks. I think that once we get some more information about, do we have Sam, do we have the, the management piece done relatively short or the structural management piece done in short or?
Not enough to get these, it will probably be, um, I think we schedule it in the second week in January, so that we can bring something forward to you for the, your second meeting in January.
All right, um, let's give some thought to this and, and sort of make some decisions.
Do we know yet when the budget hearings are gonna be?
No. I don't know, have you heard it? I don't think the budget committee set them yet, not that I'm aware of.
It's gonna be pretty quick.
Yes, they are gonna come up pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the dates may be set, it's just I don't know.
Yeah, we haven't heard and I think Denny's called the other day to see if we, they had said anything or had it on the calendar and it's, nothing's on the calendar yet.
Oh, well, you know, I forgot, like, did you get copy of delegate assembly stuff?
Yep, I have it here.
Oh, okay, good. And, and we need to get somebody signed up to do that, right?
So, keep, continue down, we're kind of, so we just have, so Ray and jump in on bond council. We're looking for board's direction because obviously if we go forward with a bond, we, we need to start with the process of bond council at this point, um, and establishing that at least. We're, Ray is recommending, um, continuing to use Divine Millamette, David Barnes, who we used just recently to refinance the Southwest bond, um, and so, we're looking for a motion to be able to connect with.
To engage with Divine Millamette for bond council services and, uh, they will be in a position to begin work immediately for the school district as soon as we're able to provide them with final positions on how we're structuring our bonds and the like. There was one caution that was offered thus far and, um, if we do go with two bonds as an example, it will be eight times two, uh, for bond application costs, processing fees and, uh, and bond council fees. If you go with a single bond, um, then you would pay one time. Our next meeting, I'll have a schedule of fees available for all of you to see exactly what that impact would look like.
Can I get a motion?
Come on.
Thanks, I can invite any questions, all in favor?
Wait, I have a question. At what point do we begin to incur costs?
When we begin the process. With the, if we do, uh, get the application processed, we begin at that point. If you guys say to go ahead, that's when we, when the meter starts.
So what's the potential cost if we've moved forward and it's not passed?
Probably, my guess, Lori's about thirty-five hundred dollars.
And what's the time difference if we waited until something passed?
Well, you can't, because we have to have bond hearings prior to this time, prior to the warrants, pri, I think it's January twentieth or so, we have to have a bond hearing on this beforehand, so you have to do that process before it even gets to a warrant.
Okay.
The district has to prove that it's financially responsible before it's introducing, uh.
But we can do it.
I'm sorry, did we get down to me and you seconded?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other question?
She's quick.
All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, free now.
Thank you.
Now we get to the delegate assembly. The delegate assembly is Saturday, January fourteenth, from nine to noon is hot topics. Then lunch is noon to one and the delegate assembly actually is one fifteen to three thirty at the local government center in Concord. I just need to know who would be going from.